I'm going to call to order this appeal by the Seven Oaks Classical School. And I will indicate for the record that in addition to myself, Lee Jones and Penny Gibson's are present from the Board of Commissioners. So the purpose of the hearing today and a bit of the history of this, to begin with, on August 19th, 2021, the Health Department issued Citation Number 1879 on the basis of violation of the emergency health orders mask requirements. And that citation was issued to Seven Oaks Classical School, Inc. On August 26, 2021, Dr. Stephen Ship, on behalf of Seven Oaks Classical Schools, Inc. filed an appeal of the ticket. The appeal was based on three points, which are summarized below. Point one, the enforcing of the health order would have an adverse impact on students who are experiencing a disability and those who and those who are facing potential disability. Point two, the compelling interest in education, maintaining the emotional and social well-being of students, as well as maintaining a health partnership with parents justifies deviation from the health order. And that school 2022 COVID protocols ensures public health. And point three, that the emergency health order does not apply to schools. The purpose of this hearing today is to determine if, based on the factual basis for the citation, the school has proven it more likely than not that any of the following are present. One, that enforcing the citation would have an impact on students experiencing disability and that those impacts outweigh the risks contemplated by the emergency health order. Or two, that enforcing the citation would materially impact a compelling interest that justifies deviation from the emergency health order and that the school has taken measures that ensures the public health. Or three, the emergency health order does not apply to Seven Oaks Classical Schools. So this is a hearing between two parties. It is not a public hearing. Each party will have an opportunity to present information following the presentation. Each witness must take an oath that the information given is subject to the penalties of perjury. After each presenter or witness, the other party will have the opportunity to question that presenter or witness. Seven Oaks Classical Schools, Inc. will proceed first, followed by the Monroe County Health Department, after both parties have presented information. Seven Oaks will have the opportunity to rebut or present additional information that is responsive to the information presented by the Health Department. The hearing will not follow formal procedures. However, each party is only permitted to speak if permitted to do so by the Board of Commissioners. As stated before, each party will have an opportunity to be heard, but neither party has the opportunity to interrupt or disrupt the other party's presentation unless they have a formal objection to the relevance of the information. The Board of Commissioners may make inquiries to the parties at any point in time. At the conclusion of this hearing, the Commissioners may vote on the appeal or decide to take some time to deliberate on the information. In either event, a written determination shall be issued to the parties within 15 days from the conclusion of the hearing. So we will begin with Seven Oaks. Mr. Cockrell, will you please administer the oath to Dr. Ship? Please.
Yes, Dr. Ship, you'll need to unmute first. Can you raise your right hand? And do you affirm under the penalties of perjury that the information you are about to give is, to the best of your knowledge, accurate?
I do.
That is the oath.
Thank you so much. And so you may begin with your presentation whenever you are ready, Dr. Ship. Thank you for joining us today.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today. While I certainly wish it weren't necessary, I'm also grateful that a process exists for resolving this dispute. I anticipate walking through the bases of my appeal in approximately 25 to 30 minutes. And then we're not calling witnesses, so hopefully we'll have time for just this presentation. I think that the Commission showed wisdom when it added Chapter 307 to the Monroe County Code in May of this year, allowing for a case-by-case consideration of whether enforcement of the county's emergency health order in particular circumstances might result in some unintended harm. And I think that is the standard according to Section 307.5 of the County Code. The guiding question for the Commission today is whether, quote, "implementation of the order causes harm due to any of the following, as you outlined. Enforcing the health order would have an adverse impact on individuals experiencing a disability. The appellant has a compelling interest that justifies deviation from the health order and has taken measures that ensure public health. Or third, appellant appeals that no violation of the emergency health order occurred." We, as we get started, I just want to say that I think this process exists for a reason. Commissioners and the Board of Health have different roles to play. It's the responsibility of the Health Board to focus on health. And that's the responsibility of the Commissioners, by contrast, I think, to think more broadly, to weigh competing goods and to balance potential harms. We certainly assume that the Appeal Ordinance doesn't establish the process of appeal merely to give the appellant an opportunity to be heard, but in order to allow for careful consideration in light of legal standards of review. We also recognize that this appeal is the first of its kind in the county. And so it'll be the job of you, the Commissioners, to be clear in your own minds what would satisfy the criteria outlined in the County Code. So what follows is an attempt to demonstrate that we satisfied each of the three bases of appeal presented in the County Code, though we, of course, only need to succeed in one for our appeal to be sustained. And preparing for today, several possible approaches occurred to us, especially given the lack of precedent. One would be more aggressive with a full slate of witnesses. Another was suggested by both the quiet and sincere professionalism of the Commissioners themselves, as well as our own desires as schools to make Seven Oaks priority education rather than public battles with other public bodies. That's our preference by disposition, although there are those who have engaged in political grandstanding towards Seven Oaks and who have probably expected us to assume a similar posture. We understand that our mission is not political grandstanding, but educational excellence. So we understand from the code that this is to be an informal process. And so from the example of the Commission and our understanding of our mission as a school and the invitation of the code, I'm just going to simply walk through the bases of our appeal, noting supporting evidence along the way. I do plan to take the bases of appeal in reverse order. I think it'll be helpful to look first at why we think the school's COVID protocol was within bounds at the time the citation was issued. Then I'll go on to explain why we think the action was reasonable. And to that end, I'll note several compelling interests, not least that of avoiding an adverse impact to students experiencing disability. Compelling interests that have been pursued, notably, I think, without undermining public health. So first, I'll take up the question of whether the Seven Oaks position with regard to masks was constituted a violation of the code or the health order as it existed at the time. Now, as we discuss the relevant orders, I think it's important to keep in mind that the citation under appeal is a citation issued on August 19th, which puts it before the most recent executive order or the most recent version of the county's public health order. So Section 5 of the county's public health order, and here I'll refer to Exhibit B, the August 5th version of the public health order for the county. Section 5 that was in force at the time the school was cited is, I think, ambiguous at best. This section states that K-12 schools shall follow CDC, IDOE, and ISTH guidelines. However, it lacked clarity. For example, the order doesn't establish that a recommendation, as opposed to requirement, should be considered a guideline. And none of the referenced organizations had, in fact, mandated universal masking in K-12 schools, but had instead recognized that local circumstances vary among schools and that recommendations should be interpreted and applied in a way that fits each school's particular context. Now, the last sentence of Section 5 is unambiguous. It explicitly subordinates the order's authority to any delegation of authority by the state to local school boards. This line reads this way. Quote, "Nothing in this paragraph is intended to or does alter or modify any state or federal law requirements imposed upon or authority provided to schools," end quote. The question then with respect to the citation under review today is whether the Seven Oaks Board of Directors had the authority from the state at the time the citation was issued to make face masks optional. According to the county health order, any such grant of authority from the state would supersede anything contained in the county health order. So I'll move next to Exhibit C, Executive Order 2119, that was then in effect. We would argue that Executive Order 2119 provided just such a grant of authority. Section 4 of this executive order tasked K-12 schools with implementing local mitigation measures in their buildings, facilities, and grounds. Certain boundaries were set to the school's authority. That is, schools were required to report COVID-19, known COVID-19 cases as prescribed by the Department of Health. Consistent with this order, the Board of Directors and Administration of Seven Oaks adopted local measures. These measures included a number of risk mitigation strategies. And here I would refer the Commissioners to Exhibit D, Seven Oaks 2122 COVID protocols. These measures, mitigation strategies include consistent reporting of cases and also included the option of omitting masks for staff and students who wish to do so. Section 5 of Executive Order 2119 clarifies that the order does not modify the authority of local health departments with respect to quarantines or closures, leaving open the possibility then that the executive order does modify or limit the authority of local health departments in other respects, as it did in Section 4 by granting authority to school boards to adopt mitigation strategies, local measures tailored to their particular circumstances. Finally, Section 6 of the Executive Order permits local orders to be more restrictive, quote, "unless prohibited by an executive order." So it's significant then, as I've already showed, that Section 4 of this same executive order gives the responsibility for crafting school-based mitigation strategies to local school boards. Remember too, what else I've showed, that the county's emergency health order explicitly subordinated its authority to any authority otherwise granted to schools by the state. Again, remember that sentence. "Nothing in this paragraph is intended to or does alter or modify any state or federal law requirements imposed upon or authority provided to schools." Indeed, the choice exercised by the Seven Oaks Board of Directors would seem to be exactly what the governor intended. In the July 29th edition of the Indy Star, which was reporting on Executive Order 2119, it quoted Governor Holcomb as saying the mask mandates were, quote, "gonna be the school's call," end quote. Here I refer you to Exhibit E. Subsequent changes to the relevant orders actually serve to demonstrate the strength of our interpretation. Since the school citation, both the executive order and the county emergency health order have been revised in ways that seem calculated to remove any ambiguity and to explicitly limit schools' authority to adopt local health measures. So here I'll refer to Executive Order 2124, Exhibit F. 2124 continues to make schools, quote, "responsible for implementing local measures and restrictions to address the impact and spread of COVID-19," end quote. However, this new order stipulates that, quote, "these restrictions and measures may be more restrictive, but not less restrictive than required by local ordinances and directives and state or local health orders." Now, the latest Monroe County Health Department Public Health Regulation also adopted, I should note, after the school's citation, retains a section on schools but adds this sentence, bolded and underlined with some use of all caps, apparently with Seven Oaks in mind. Quote, "If the CDC recommends wearing face coverings, schools shall require students to wear face coverings during school unless an exception listed in Paragraph 2 applies." So the very fact that these changes were made indicates that the original language was determined either to be unclear or else to support Seven Oaks' interpretation. Yet our appeal today concerns an alleged violation of the health order as it existed on August 19th, not under the executive and health orders as they have been modified since. So that's your task, as I take it, to determine whether Seven Oaks was in violation as of August 19th, not as of orders as they exist today. Based on the foregoing analysis, we contend that the school's masking policy was not in violation of the county health order. So thus far in the argument, I have attempted to explain why Seven Oaks thought it was lawful to give staff and parents a choice of whether to wear masks. At this point, the Commission has heard enough to, I think, to vacate the citation and find, without considering the merits or demerits, of making masks optional. Now, if the citation were being issued today, the county would have a strong argument, I think, for the position that the county has authority that trumps that of local school boards in the question of whether schools should require masks. Now, in the interest of offering a full explanation of the bases of our appeal, however, I will proceed to consider the next question posed by the county's Appeal Ordinance, whether the school has any compelling interests that justify deviating from the health order and whether alongside these interests, the school has taken measures to ensure public health. Now, it should be noted that these bases of appeal are applicable even under the language of the relevant orders currently in effect. That is, if the county now has the authority to require masks, generally, the code still preserves the possibility of appealing on the grounds of the order, though good in its general application causes harm in particular circumstances. So I'll move next to then to the, again, the argument that a school has compelling interest to justify deviation from the health order, as well as what we've done to ensure public health. As we take up this topic, I do want to pause for a second and just say how much I've appreciated my interactions with Ms. Cottle over the past 18 months. I found her to be a kind and sympathetic person and a true civil servant. And nothing I say this afternoon is intended to be a critique of her or the others working alongside her to protect public health to the best of their ability within the limited resources, information, and authority that they have. To my mind, they've been dealt a difficult hand and they've borne up with remarkable resilience and grace. I also just want to reiterate again my opinion that there's wisdom in the process that's been created. It falls to the county commissioners, not the Health Department, to weigh this appeal. That's because commissioners hold a political office. And then the art of politics involves weighing competing goods and harms in the pursuit of the common good. I think of Aristotle's description of politics as the architektonic or overarching art that considers the inside of all the other arts, including medicine. If government, like Catherine Ahab, reduced its focus to a single objective, say something like zero case count, then one might opt for a universal requirement of surgical-grade masks with mandatory corresponding training. But in the County Code, it's clear that that's not what the Commissioners intended. I might note too that our authorizer, despite a number of calls from county officials, is elected to take a wait-and-see approach. An acknowledgement of, as they say in Exhibit H, our, quote, "continuous efforts to keep students, faculty, and families safe during this COVID-19 pandemic," end quote, and out of, I think, respect for the process that the county has created. So as we turn to the question then of whether any compelling interest justified the school's current mask policy, I'm going to outline three such interests. The first has to do with education, the second with health, and the third with parents. So first, our compelling interest with respect to education. As we prepared for the school year, the most obvious compelling interest that Seven Oaks considered was that of educating to the best of the school's ability all of those entrusted to the school's care. As a school that offers a strong education, the liberal arts and sciences, we seek to move students from a myopic view of the world by means of study and reading that enlarges their perspective temporally, geographically, culturally. Consistent with this habit, we can't help noticing that nations with more diverse populations than what we have locally and longer experience of COVID-19, including the Delta variant, have conducted a kind of cost-benefit analysis in light of the latest data and concluded that mask requirements no longer make sense in a school setting. For example, in the United Kingdom's operational guidance to schools last updated August 27th, 2021, the government writes, quote, "As COVID-19 becomes a virus that we learn to live with, there is now an imperative to reduce the disruption to children and young people's education, particularly given that the direct clinical risks to children are extremely low and every adult has been offered a first vaccine." This is Exhibit I. The government's guidance goes on to state, quote, "Our priority is for you to deliver face-to-face, high-quality education for all pupils. The evidence is clear that being out of education causes significant harm to educational attainment, life chances, mental and physical health." With regard to masks, the UK's government, the government guidance states that, quote, "face coverings are no longer advised for people, staff, and visitors in classrooms or in communal areas." Now, I suspect there's a lot that all of us can agree on. The claim that COVID-19 has impeded progress in education is uncontroversial. On state assessments last year, under 29% of Indiana students in grades 3 through 8 measured proficient on both math and ELA. This is, I included this information in Exhibit J. In fact, the state's so concerned with learning losses arising from COVID that it didn't count last year's assessment results against schools' ratings on the state's A through F scale. Schools around the state are playing catch-up. Unfortunately, schools really can't educate as well when everyone's required to wear a mask throughout the instructional day. Again, I don't think this point is intended to be terribly controversial. I take it to be more common sense. Face masks present, at least to some degree, an impediment to teaching and learning. Masks muffle voices, they obscure facial expressions, and make it more difficult to gauge student participation and understanding. I've included a few studies about potential negative impacts of mask-wearing in Exhibit K for the Commission to consider. At Seven Oaks, the education is such that the negative impacts that might be felt in other schools are perhaps felt to a greater degree than in a school that might have a different curriculum or pedagogy. Our early literacy program is built around an intensive, explicit phonics-based approach to teaching reading. We teach students each sound by, each sound made by every letter and letter combination in the English language. For grades K through 3, especially the ability for teachers to show mouth position and to pronounce letters crisply without any barriers is critical. So too, the ability of teachers to see their students' mouths and hear distinctly the sounds they produce. These same concerns apply to modern foreign language. At Seven Oaks, actually, starting in 4th grade, we introduce virtually all of our students to French, and nearly all of them will continue studying French at least through 8th grade with the option of continuing if they elect in high school. So along these lines, I would encourage the Commission to consult Exhibit L. This is the Chair of our Modern Foreign Languages Department talking about, both about the experience of teaching French and as a former 4th grade teacher, thinking about teaching phonics as with the challenge of masking. I might note that the educational impact of widespread mask use should be evaluated as well under Paragraph 2 of the public health order, whether the August 5th version or the August 23rd, which provides an exception to the general mask mandate for, quote, "individuals who are engaged in a form of indoor exercise that is incompatible with wearing a face covering." Even in that language, the health order recognizes that some activities are not compatible with wearing a face covering. Academic exercises of the sort regularly practiced at Seven Oaks, I would suggest, are among those that are incompatible with mandatory mask-wearing. In the weighing of goods, it certainly would be strange if the Commissioners ultimately determined that physical exercise should be treated as such a significant good that it outweighs concerns related to masking, yet refuses to accept the argument that academics should weigh at least as heavily in the balance. Reading the local newspaper, I can't help noting the the joyful scenes of local school athletics events with packed crowds, with the majority on masks, and in close proximity. It's simply beggars' belief that we would not give equal or greater priority to learning as we do to cheering. I'll move next to a second compelling interest, the school's compelling interest with respect to health. Here's another place where I think we probably share a lot of common grounds, all of us on this call. The health of our community weighs heavily on the minds of each of us. In Exhibit M, I noted Penny Cottle's statement in a recent article about the Seven Oaks situation, saying, "Everybody has the same goals in mind. We agree." I doubt that any of us would disagree that schools have a compelling interest in promoting the total well-being of their staff and students. Now, I have heard some say to me, "Just because you have the right to make masks optional doesn't mean that you should." What about health? Well, again, I'll just reiterate, the Board and Administration of Seven Oaks are deeply concerned about the overall health and well-being of staff and students and have been keenly interested in data-driven research related to school mitigation measures. I think we would all agree that the question of health is also broader than just COVID-19. The school has a compelling interest in promoting the total well-being of their staff and students. Our concern for well-being extends not only to the physical health, but also to the social and emotional health of our students. This compelling interest, together with the evidence for the negative impacts of prolonged mask-wearing on students' academic, physical, psychological, and social-emotional well-being, and the limited effectiveness of masks in a real-world school environment, suggests that it may be reasonable to grant the school's appeal. Whatever the health benefits of universal masking, a growing body of scientific work suggests potential undesirable side effects of extended mask-wearing. Indeed, a number of recent studies have raised serious questions about the negative impacts of prolonged mask-wearing on students, again, physical, social, and emotional well-being. The range of potential negative impacts arising from the science includes, but is not limited to, educational, sociological, psychological, neurological, and epidemiological impairments. I would point you to Exhibit K, which collects a few of the studies that are emerging on negative impacts of masks. I think Diane Wells of the Owen County Health Department, as she recently observed, she put, "Well, the public health of a community does include the social and emotional health, in addition to physical health. And seeking good public health in a community requires considering all such aspects holistically." Here I point you to Exhibit Q, an HT article about the Owen County's decision to drop its school mask mandate. So there are various studies, as I've suggested, that bear on the question. For example, the scientific literature casts doubts about the efficacy of masks in slowing transmission in real-world school environments. Mechanistic studies suggest surgical-grade masks in a controlled environment with little or no air circulation do have some effect in preventing the transmission of COVID-19. However, ecological studies suggest that the effects are minimal in a real-world setting. As a school that required masks last year, whenever students were transitioning around the building, we had opportunity to try educating students in mask use. Our conclusion was that it was virtually impossible to ensure that student-age children will consistently wear masks in a way that would make an appreciable difference in reducing transmission of COVID-19, much less have access to the quality of masks that would ensure the highest results. Whatever potential surgical grade masks might have under ideal conditions, the masks available to students as worn in real world conditions appear to have far less effect. Here, I would point you to exhibit N, which collects some studies on mask effectiveness. Studies also suggest that schools and particularly school children present relatively low risk in terms of community transmission. Here, I point you to exhibit O, which gives you an example of a study on community transmission in a school setting. Our experience matches this study. Last year, we found no strong evidence of school based transmission thus far this year, even with the Delta and variants. Transmission typically occurs within families, not between students. I think within our community, St. Charles offers an interesting point of comparison. It functions as a kind of control group. It's in the same county with a similar size of school population, but as I understand it, enforced mask wearing. Yet, according to the state's data dashboard, St. Charles has reported a similar number of cases as we have. Every illness is significant and we grieve with all of those who have known suffering or loss. But as we've dealt with COVID nineteen, we are thankful that with all that's horrible about this disease, COVID nineteen poses relatively lower risk of serious illness or death to the young, something that I think is reflected in the data from Monroe County, which has seen no COVID related deaths below the age of fifty. Here, I would point you to exhibit P. This in the state graph from the state data dashboard, COVID nineteen dashboard. From Monroe County. Whatever the health benefits of universal masking, a growing body of scientific work, as I've suggested, indicates potential undesirable side effects that come with extended mask wearing. Indeed, a number of recent studies have raised serious questions about the negative impacts of prolonged mask wearing on students' physical, social and emotional well being. The, and the range is what I've suggested. Extending to every aspect of the health of a student. I, I would also just add that parents have had an opportunity to weigh risks and take steps to mitigate those risks. Those age twelve and older, including staff and family members, have had an opportunity to get vaccinated, which thankfully significantly reduces the risk of serious illness. While we certainly respect the Board of Health's expertise and acknowledge that they may produce other studies that argue for the effectiveness of masks in schools, at the very least, I, I'm suggesting that the efficacy of masks in actual practice in a real world school environment in contrast to their effects in theory under ideal lab conditions is at least a contested issue. And thus, the medical argument in favor of school masking can't alone be the determining factor where like here compelling and competing interests, including other health interests, argue for a different approach. I would just reiterate that particular circumstances matter. Even those in particular, as particular as the different circumstances confronting different schools. The CDC and state offer broad recommendations and guidelines. The county's public health order and county's process for appeal likewise offer a broad mandate, but all recognize the need to tailor. That is to adapt the general to the particular. In the case of the county, the very fact that a process exists for the hearing we're engaged in now tests to the presumption in the code that there will be exceptions to the general rule in order to avoid unintended harm to the public good. When you consider that Seven Oaks with its size, mitigation strategies and environmental factors has not seen a serious outbreak of COVID nineteen among staff and students. It would seem the school's actions have been responsible and effective. This last fact can't be ignored. Seven Oaks mitigation strategies have proved sufficient in preventing serious outbreaks of COVID nineteen among our staff and students. The only substantive difference between our policy last year and this year is that under the current policy, masks are optional, not only when students are stationary in their classes, but also when transitioning. Indeed, if the commissioners decline our appeals, Seven Oaks would be required to enforce a masking policy more stringent than last year's. Despite the Board of Health's apparent satisfaction with last year's policy and the declining rates of serious illness and hospitalization sense. I'll just touch briefly on a third compelling interest that with respect to parents. I do think schools have a compelling interest in maintaining a healthy partnership with parents and the education of their children. After all, it is parents who bear the primary responsibility for the education and well being of their children. In part, this partnership means, I think, allowing parental choice wherever a school may do so, consistent with that school's mission and public health and, and good order. For now, I would simply observe that many of our parents have enrolled in Seven Oaks in the belief that the school would afford a choice with respect to masks. Many of our parents have concerns, real concerns about the negative impacts of mask wearing on their children in particular. On their children's education and on their physical, social and emotional well being. And here I would point you to two exhibits, exhibits R and S. Exhibit R is by a Seven Oaks parent who has a background studying social emotional concerns and exhibit S is by a Seven Oaks parent who is also a biology professor at IU. As a school, as you might expect, we're sympathetic to the concerns of these parents. They are among those, like all of our parents who've had time to weigh the risks associated with COVID nineteen. And including risks associated with wearing or not wearing masks as they attempt to sort out the competing costs and benefits for themselves and their children. We've been comfortable allowing parents the option in part because the choice of some families not to wear masks has relatively little bearing on those who do and vice versa. And in point of fact, we've tried to avoid masks becoming a, a kind of hot button topic in our school community and, and I think we've been largely successful, which I take to be a good thing. It's regrettable, but it, it does seem like some are treating face masks as a kind of litmus test of one's overall concern for public health. And I think that's unfortunate. Other prevention measures exist besides masks and indeed, the school has adopted a variety of protocols aimed at mitigating risks to public health. Including the, the risks posed by COVID nineteen. Again, I would point you back to exhibit D and Seven Oaks COVID protocols for this year. And, and I would just again reiterate that the steps the schools take in half proves effective. So for these reasons, Seven Oaks has proceeded in the belief that it has compelling interests. And that really any one of these compelling interests justifies a deviation from the county health order. These clear and compelling interests should be weighed against the unsettled science of mask wearing in a school context for extended periods of time. Even a single compelling interest, together with the school's measures to ensure public health would be sufficient to justify granting our appeal. Commissioners, I would simply ask that you follow the guidance of the county code. If we showed even one compelling interest, if the science on masks is at best unsettled, if the public health has in fact been preserved. What, what could stand in the way of granting the school's appeal? And in some ways, we're simply asking the question that the county's own leading health authorities raised at their last public meeting. Should a countywide mask made mask mandate be continued? Does it make sense any longer from a cost benefit perspective? Here, I would note exhibit T, a news article describing that quotes three leading health officials calling into question whether the mandate should be extended. Of course, we're, we're not asking that, that question ourselves on a countywide level. We're, we're simply asking this question about our own immediate context. In a small school like Seven Oaks that has so many environmental factors working in its favor, is an all day universal mask mandate necessary? Is it wise? Will the results justify the time, energy and quite honestly, the parental ill will that would follow? As you consider our appeal, bear in mind that we were, to my knowledge, the only school in Monroe County to be open exclusively for in person instruction for the entirety of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year. And we did it without interruption and without disproportionate case counts relative to schools that were online only or hybrid for substantial portions of the year. We're now more than a month into the school year. This school year, without any clear indication that the school's mask policy is significantly undermines the health of our school community. We merely ask that the commissioners observe and base their decision on reality rather than hypotheticals. Finally, I'll move to my last section on raising a concern that enforcing the health order would have an adverse impact on individuals experiencing a disability. To this point, I've argued that Seven Oaks has attempted to avoid harm and promote the overall well being of students. I've shown that the school's mask policy has not harmed public health. At the same time, I've offered a reasonable argument for why a policy of universal indoor masking throughout the school day would present a real harm to students' education and the overall well being in ways and their over, overall well being in ways that are contrary to the compelling interest of the school. In this last section of the argument, I would simply agree with the public health order that there is good reason to think that the harms arising from universal all day masks, masking would fall heaviest on the disabled. Especially those with a speech, language pathology and emotional disability or autism spectrum disorder. The county's concern for the disabled is as clear as it is laudable. Not only is concern for the disabled evident in the county's appeal process, but also in the language of the public health order itself, which explicitly exempts, quote, individuals who are hearing or speaking impaired and for whom a face covering is an obstacle to communication. Presently, approximately thirteen percent of the student body at Seven Oaks has an individualized education plan, an IEP, including thirty one students with a speech or language impairment. Several dozen more qualify for services because of dyslexia, ADD, ADHD, autism and emotional disability. When you tally up the total number of students with a disadvantage or disability or a deficit, who have an IEP five oh four plan or receive Title One support without even getting to potential dyslexia, you're, you're looking at over a quarter of the student body. Yet, as we noted in our appeal, no inquiry was made into what percentage of the student body was an individual experiencing a relevant disability prior to the issuance of the citation. No review was undertaken to understand how many students should have been exempted from the general mask made, just on the grounds of the explicit exemption in paragraph two. Unless the commissioners wish to reduce these portions of the county code and public health order that the status of mere window dressing. I think here again, the citation should be vacated. In closing, I would reiterate that there are really two basic reasons for sustaining Seven Oaks' appeal, but the first would be to acknowledge that the school board had the authority to make masks optional under the orders in effect at the time. Both the governor and the Board of Health have implicitly acknowledged the merit of this contention by revising their respective orders since that time. The second would be to acknowledge that the school has compelling interests that recommend against a universal indoor mask mandate, including an interest in the well being of the disabled. And that the school has implemented other mitigation strategies sufficient for the preservation of public health. Even though I genuinely believe that we all share the same basic goals, I also believe that our position on masks isn't radical. And in fact, we noted with interest in news article dated September eighth, that reported on the county board of health's discussion whether to extend the present mask mandate. In that article, Monroe County's health administrator, county health officer and county attorney all seemed to suggest that the benefits to be gained from enforcing the mask mandate may be outweighed by the cost of enforcement, pointing back to exhibit T. We would simply echo that sentiment as it applies to our school in particular. At the end of the day, I'm an educator. I want to educate. The mask issue is an unnecessary distraction. I sincerely hope that we'll be permitted to focus on our core mission. And to that end, I ask that you sustain our appeal. Now, as you weigh this matter, I, I, I do feel obligated to sound one final note of concern. We've pursued this appeal in good faith, trusting in the process that the commission has created. However, I, I would be remiss if I didn't note a little bit of uneasiness about certain aspects of this procedure. The commission has created, the commission created the process for appeal. The commission also appoints the members of the health board and approves the county health, the county's health orders. And now the commission is also serving as a, and I kind of pause the judicial function. And in general, it seems preferable to separate legislative and judicial functions so that an appeal could be heard by a disinterested neutral party. I, I think our, our concerns with the process about about neutrality in particular have been heightened a bit by a comment in the last public health meeting that seems to suggest that there's only, there had only been, at least at the time of this last public health meeting, there only been one citation issued this fall. The one that there's an appeal on. I don't know if that's still the case, but our appeal, it seems, is I guess ours is necessarily the first the commission could have taken up precisely because it's our citation is the only one to have been issued again as of the last public health meeting. Despite so many organizations around town having so clearly adopted a laissez faire approach to the county mask mandate. I'd also note that during that same public health board meeting, which is available publicly, of course, online, you can watch it. Two members described themselves as, quote, angry or, quote, ticked off. And that kind of heightened emotion is generally thought to cloud clear judgment. Perhaps even more egregiously, in a recent exchange on HT's Facebook page, following the posting of the article about Seven Oaks' appeal, a member of the health board identifies herself in her official capacity and then engages in, you know, kind of some mudslinging of a sort that calls into question the capability of satisfying her professional duties in a disinterested neutral manner in the performance of her public office. We, we want to believe that the decisions of the health board on the current issue can be presumed to be untainted by bias. But I, I hope you can appreciate how under the circumstances, it's, it's a little hard not to feel singled out as though the citation of Seven Oaks reflects either pre existing animus or a boiling over frustration and not the product of a neutral process that's been calmly and carefully and evenly applied. And so I think this, this appeal really represents an opportunity to help our school in particular and the public broadly to maintain a faith in the integrity of this, the commission and of this appeal process and of the health board. So that I'll just close by thanking you commissioners. I, I look forward to your determination of this matter. I'm happy to make the, the comments I've worked through available to you after today's hearing. Thank you.
Done mute. Thank you, Dr. Ship. We appreciate you. And the next thing on our list would be to have members of the health department who are on our list as witnesses and allow them to ask questions of you. However, I think it would be useful for us to take a quick, just because we've been here almost an hour, just to take a quick five minute break. If that's amenable to everyone and come back just to refresh our coffees and whatnot and and then we can continue with this hearing and the next item would be to have questions from the health department. Is that okay with everyone? Good?
Yep.
Great.
Me too.
We're going, we're going to recess for five minutes. We'll come back at three fifty five. Thanks, everyone.
Now, don't leave. Just mute yourself.
All right, we will go ahead and resume the hearing. Thank you for indulging us for a few minutes. Ms. Rice, did you get on to give us some information?
I came on. I was hoping to ask Dr. Ship some questions.
Okay. So we are at that point where we will take questions from the health board. Mr. Cockrell, do these folks need to be sworn in before they ask questions or just when they provide testimony?
It's only the provision of the information that requires the testimony.
Thank you.
Being sworn, the oath.
Got it. Thank you so much. All right. All right, so we will start with questions for Dr. Ship from members of the health board and the council, Margie Rice.
Thank you. And I do want to make sure that Dr. Ship is aware that he does have to testify or answer questions truthfully. So just for the record, I believe his oath does apply to his answering questions. He's required to tell the truth.
That is correct. He is.
Okay. Dr. Ship, do you know if any of your members of your board of directors are on this call today?
I don't.
Can you look at the list of attendees? Please, and identify if any of your board of directors are on this call.
Can you tell me how to do that?
Yeah, there should be a list of participants and it'll have panelists, and there are 11 panelists, and there are 34 attendees. You can click on that. It should say down at the bottom, "participants, 45," and you click on it. Breaks you down between panelists and attendees. There are a few phone numbers that you might recognize as your board members or names.
Sorry, I'm scrolling.
That's fine. A list.
Do you need that I recognize?
Is Angie Boucher associated with Seven Oaks School?
Yes, she's an executive assistant at Seven Oaks.
Okay, what about the number 1-310-467-0555?
I don't recognize that number.
And the 812-650-2965, that's an Ellisville number. Is that associated with Seven Oaks?
I don't recognize that number.
So you're saying that you do not know that any board members on this call?
Correct.
Okay. So let me ask you some questions about, I won't take a whole lot of your time, but I want to ask a few questions about what you said earlier. So you've never attended a board of health meeting, is that correct?
Correct.
And you do understand that the regulatory process for putting in place the masks begins at the local board of health, correct?
Yes.
So that's part of the democratic process. Can you explain why, if you are interested in democracy, you did not participate in the democratic process? And share the information that you shared today with the board of commissioners, with the board of health?
I object to the relevance of this question. Perhaps Jeff can chime in here.
I'm asking you why you did not attend a board of health meeting?
As those who know me will tell you, I'm kept very busy running the school.
Okay, so you did not have time to attend a board of health meeting?
That's correct.
Okay. Do you, did you have time to email any of the information or your objections that you shared today with commissioners, with the members of the board of health or Penny Cotto?
I hadn't thought it necessary until we were cited because I thought that we were operating within the guidelines that had been set forth.
So your objections to the local mask regulation, you shared with, you did not want to share those with the board of health until you were cited?
I would just remind you that our understanding of the relevant orders in place at the time of the citation didn't pose any problem for the school's policy.
Okay, yeah, let's talk about that a little bit. So you stated that you interpreted the executive orders and the local board of health is not applying to you. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, and so executive order.
Excuse me. What I, I think a more accurate way of stating what I said was that we thought that the authority had been granted to the school board to adopt a policy that allowed for masks to be welcome but not required.
So when you went through executive order 2119, which is, I think, the one that you thought gave you that, that created that loophole or that exception. It does say in paragraph four that except is provided below, K through 12 school corporations are responsible for implementing local measures and restrictions to address the impact and spread of COVID-19 in their buildings, facilities, and grants. How do you define the word "implement"?
You know, I, I think I've given my interpretation of 2119 already. I would just refer back to the same comments I've offered previously.
Okay, so implement is to put into effect. So local schools are responsible for putting into effect local regulations. And you knew there was a local regulation regarding masks, correct?
Yeah, I think here, again, I want to refer back to the interpretation that we understood that part of the responsibility of local authorities for schools, including the school board, was to implement local measures. Our school board did pass a policy that made masks optional. I have mentioned that policy.
Okay, so you did not interpret, just to be clear, you did not interpret paragraph four where school corporations aren't responsible for implementing local measures and restrictions. You thought that you could decide the school, you thought that your boards or your parents' opinion trumped the local board of health. Is that correct?
We thought that the executive order could be read, invites you to read, that the governor himself suggested it be read in a way that allowed a decision about masks to be made by a local school board.
Okay, so it also says in paragraph five, there's no limitation on authority, no limitation on authority. And you read that as perhaps a partial limitation on authority where they could they could, there was no limitation on quarantine or isolation or there was no limitation on closure, but perhaps there was a partial limitation so that they could not put in place a mask ordinance. That's your interpretation?
I think I've already explained in some detail how we arrived at the interpretation.
Yeah, I'm just trying to clarify and make sure I understand your interpretation. So your interpretation was that there was no limitation on the authority to quarantine, no limitation on the authority to close, yet there wouldn't be a limitation on their ability to put a mask. Is that your, is that your interpretation or your reading of that executive order?
Yeah, maybe, maybe it would be most helpful if I just go back and work through the interpretation.
It can be helpful. You just answered a question.
Well, I'm suggesting that I offered an interpretation that's directly relevant to the question you're asking. And I can step back through the interpretation that I offered because it seems to be relevant to the question that you're asking.
Well, I just, I heard your, I heard your 15-minute presentation. I would just like to, just ask you a question. Maybe I'm not asking it the right place. Let me try again. Do you, did you interpret executive order 2119 to limit the board of health's ability to put in a mask regulation? Yes or no?
I think I, I think I've answered adequately how we arrived at our interpretation. I think the difference of interpretation is exactly why this process exists. So I would expect you to offer an interpretation. We've offered one. The commissioners will have an opportunity through the.
I just want to know if you read that executive order to limit they could close schools still, they could quarantine procedures, but they couldn't, local boards of health couldn't put in mask mandates. And I want to know if that was how you interpreted that order.
Yeah, we interpreted the executive order, just as I said, to set certain parameters within which school boards can make certain decisions, including decisions about masks, especially in light of the fact that the executive order, I'm sorry, the county health order explicitly subordinated anything in that, in that order to other authority otherwise granted to schools.
Okay, so I'll move on to, thank you for that. And so the also, you recognize in paragraph six of that same executive order, it does say that unless prohibited by an executive order, local ordinances, directives, and orders may be more restrictive provided they comply with Indiana Code 162121.5, which is the process that you have said you're grateful that the General Assembly put in place, this due process. So the executive order says unless prohibited, local ordinances, directives, and orders may be more restrictive provided they comply. And so you recognize that this executive order does allow does allow the health orders to be more restricted than what the state has in place.
Yeah, except for the responsibility given to schools in section four to implement local measures.
Yeah, implement. That means to put into effect the local measures.
Right.
Which we've already discussed. So let me ask you. You recognize that your board of health does not have the same power, or your board of directors, I'm sorry, does not have the same power as the local board of health, correct?
Well, I think that question depends on the, what is in effect at any given time. So I've suggested that I think there is a strong case to be made that under the most recent executive order, paired with the most recent county mandate, yeah, the county health board with its order as approved by the commissioners does put in place a general mask mandate.
Yeah, but you, you recognize that the board of health, Indiana as a state, has local health or has health regulatory authority. You understand that, right? The State Department of Health has regulatory authority, correct? Yes or no?
Yes.
And you understand that they've delegated to 92 counties. Each county health department has a bit of the power of the state, right? That's a pretty easy government understanding, correct? That's how it works. The part of the executive branch can delegate from the state to local government, part of the 10th Amendment of the United States Constitution. That's, you understand that, correct?
Yeah, I understand that there are competing authorities and that that's pretty common in our system. And that's one of the complexities and beauties of our system.
Sure, so I just want to, I just want to establish that you understand that the state of Indiana has regulatory powers regarding health. Yes or no?
Yeah.
And you, you also recognize that they've delegated that to the, in part, to the Monroe County Health Department and the Board of Directors for the Monroe County Health Department.
Yes.
Right, okay. And you don't think that the powers given to the board of health are also given to your board of directors, do you?
I think in the case of this executive order that there was a measure of authority given directly to the local school boards to make decisions, including, certain decisions, including decisions about whether or not students would be required to wear a mask, which seems to be an interpretation that Governor Holcomb was publicly taking at the time that that executive order was in effect.
And you talked to Governor Holcomb, or are you taking a newspaper reporter's story about what he said? Is that, is that how you're understanding what Governor Holcomb said, just that newspaper article? Or did you actually have contact with the governors?
I did not have personal contact with the governor.
So you're reading from that newspaper article?
Of the newspaper of record for Indiana, yes.
Got. And do you believe that newspaper reporters always get everything correct when they write a story?
No.
Okay. Um. So let me ask you about a state law. See if you're aware of this state law. See Indiana Code 20-26-5-6. And it was in the documents that I submitted. Do you know that? Or can I read it to you if you don't know it?
Please, feel free to read.
It says, "All powers delegated to the governing body of a school corporation under section one or four," gives a couple of quote citations, "of this chapter are subject to all laws subjecting the school corporation to regulate, regulation by a state agency, including Secretary of Education, State Board of Accounts, State Police Department, Fire Prevention and Building Safety Commission, Department of Local Government Finance, Environmental Rules Board, State School Bus Committee, State Department of Health, and any local government agency to which the state has been delegated a specific authority in matters other than educational matters and other than finance, including plan commissions, zoning boards, and boards concerned with health and safety." So we've already established, I believe, for the record, that the state of Indiana has health regulatory authority that they have delegated to the local Monroe County Board of Health. And this statute says that all powers delegated to school corporations are subject to all these laws subjecting the school corporation. You recognize that you fall under that, that law and are required to follow that law?
Yes, with certain caveats. It seems that even under the most current executive order, the school boards have some discretion to even go beyond what local health authorities have maintained.
Do you think the governor's executive order was modifying that law? Is that your position?
Seems to be the case, but I will say that you're a lawyer. I am not. I'm an educator. It seems like the process here today is intended to be a relatively informal, and it's formally provided for in the county code. And the commissioners are going to make a decision based on the appeals that have been offered.
Right, and I'm just trying to make sure I understand and the commissioners get the chance to clarify through my questioning, your understanding, your position. So I want to be clear, your school is subject to State Board of Accounts audits because you receive public tax dollars. Is that right?
Yes.
Have you always complied with those audits?
Yes.
Also said you're, you're subject to.
Who is this relevant?
I'm just wanting to make, I, I'm just asking what regulations you think apply, that apply to you and which ones you follow. So do you also follow fire prevention and building safety rules? Did your building get inspected before it was opened?
Yes.
Okay, and you also follow, you said, Secretary of Education rules, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I have a question. You brought up.
To the issue.
I'm, I'm laying, I'll get there. So hold on. You brought up, I think, a letter that one of your parents submitted. And it said, let me see if I can read from it. It said that you're, that you guys are subject to, to the laws. And I want to, and that's, I want to, I want to make sure that you, that I'm understanding correctly, that both you and your parents recognize that you are subject to these laws. In fact, the one that I just cited.
With all due respect, Margie, this is not turning over new ground. We've said in the comments offered so far that our intent all along has been to comply with the law. And we've attempted to understand it in good faith and to proceed accordingly.
Okay, so is it your understanding now, is it your position now that the executive order's been clarified and the health order's been clarified, that you're going to comply with that?
Well, I think that it is striking that the, the executive order was changed, as well as the county public health order in ways that seem to acknowledge that perhaps there was some ambiguity.
Are you complying with it now? Is your school complying with the local health regulation now?
Well, I think we need to figure out how the commissioners resolve the matter before them today. And I would say, I would just remind you that there were three bases of appeal. One of which.
I'm just asking about your compliance. So are.
You are actually linked. We can't know whether we're out of compliance until we have the result of the commissioners' meeting because there are two bases of appeal that still seem applicable under today's language, not the language at the time of the citation.
Okay. And I will concede for the record that people with disabilities, there's an exception written into, into the local health regulation to give an exception for people with disabilities who have speech or hearing impairments. Let me ask you, and that's, that's certainly an exception that you could take advantage of, and those children with legitimate speech and hearing limitations would not have to wear a mask. Have you ever tried those clear surgical masks? A surgical mask with a clear opening so that so that kids can see, you know, a mouth moving or the teacher can see the child's mouth moving. Have you tried those at your school?
Some have.
And Penny Cotto, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't she send you information about those masks?
She recently did, yeah.
Now, is that something that you think you could implement in your school that would help both to help you comply with? Both, um, to help you comply with the mask mandate, mandate, if it stays in effect and be able to, uh, is that a workable, uh, solution to that problem?
I, I think it's, it's better than something that completely obscures the mouth. I think it does have some of the defects that go along with masking, including a more muffled voice. You do have potential for glare. The mask is, the overall facial expression is still somewhat obscured. But it, it's better than an all cloth or all surgical mask. Now, a, um, again, I, I want to continue to object to the idea that we are out of compliance. I do still think that the, this appeal is intended to determine that. And I think we're all awaiting the.
So I, I'm trying to understand how substituting parental judgment for the local board of health judgment, how you think that's compliance with a, with a mask regulation?
Yeah, so.
Because, because the executive order's been clarified?
Yeah.
And if, even if, I'm not admitting that it was ambiguous, I'm not admitting that, or conceding that the local health regulation was ambiguous. But let's imagine, just for argument's sake, that they were and they've been clarified. But now you do have to comply.
But we have other bases of appeal. We need to understand the implications of.
All right. I, I will move on.
Only one of which is, um, our relationship with parents and the partnership to educate children.
So, uh, Dr. Schiff, you included in your materials a September seventeenth letter from Heather Willie.
Yes.
Why you did not include her September fourteenth letter in your materials?
Certainly, yeah. I think that there, from what I understand in talking to, uh, Heather, there had been a number of calls coming from the county trying to, uh, press, um, a finding of non-compliance. There was a letter sent to us saying, saying that we needed to conform to the county mandate. Then we were able to talk to our authorizer and, uh, Heather, and they realized, um, that, you know, actually it's better to wait for the outcome of the appeal. We don't want to get the cart before the horse, that, um, there is still a live question and that, um, a finding of non-compliance has in fact not been reached.
So she did not repeal her September fourteenth letter, did she? That was, you referred to that as a supplemental letter on the seventeen?
It certainly modifies. It changes the timeline by which we would have to comply in the event that we're found to be out of compliance.
Okay. So let me read to you from the September fourteenth letter and see if you find this ambiguous. And it underlined, "The board shall come into compliance no later than Monday, September twentieth, twenty twenty-one." And then her September seventeenth letter moved that date.
That's right.
She does state in this letter, um, "Following our conversation with state officials, it is our belief that the governor never intended to limit a local health department's authority to issue a more restrictive order slash regulation for K through twelve schools in Indiana. To reinforce this intent, the governor issued a new executive order, twenty-one dash twenty-four, that further clarified in section six eight, "The local school boards and/or relevant governing bodies of all public and private K through twelve educational institutions are responsible for implementing local measures and restrictions to address the impact and spread of COVID nineteen in their buildings, facilities, and grounds." That said, the executive order twenty-one dash twenty-four specifically states, "These restrictions and measures may be more restrictive, but not less restrictive than required by statute." Remember, we already established earlier that that language was also in executive order, uh, twenty-one dash nineteen. But she goes on to say, "We believe it is now clear that the board and the school must come into compliance with any slash all promulgated orders by the Monroe County Health Department related to COVID nineteen." Do you find that ambiguous?
All right. Well, I, I think this is all very interesting. If your desire is to confuse or embarrass, the fact of the matter is that that's, uh, between, uh, two parties, is relevant to the authorizer and to us. And you, you're obscuring the fact that this was superseded by a revised letter that pushed back the deadline and acknowledgement of the fact that we need to let this process that the commissioners have created play out.
Did the, uh, September fourteenth, uh, letter say that you did not have to comply?
It said that we needed to comply by September twentieth, then we talked and the letter.
Did the second letter say you did not have to comply?
It said, it said that we would have to comply if we were found to be out of compliance, essentially. So we would have a certain number of days from the ruling by the commissioners. But really, whatever this interpretation, it's irrelevant to the commissioner's consideration.
Maybe, maybe not. Let's, let me, let me find the, um, find that letter and read it.
All, all you're really doing is saying another attorney agreed with your take at one particular point in time.
Um, if the appeal is granted, the sponsor will accept that decision and no further action by the board shall be denied.
That's right.
No later than seven calendar days from the date of the final decision, unless otherwise agreed to in writing by the.
That's right. So really, the conversation with the authorizer is on hold until we find out the outcome of the commissioner's consideration.
So you think, um, but you think it's possible, possibility that you might still not have to comply with local regulations, correct?
I think that the commissioners may find that we have complied, particularly not only the argument about executive orders in effect, and we've talked about that at length, but also compelling interests combined with considerations of ensuring.
Hearing about whether the two hundred and fifty dollar ticket should.
I think it'll be relevance, um, the, the terms under which the commissioners decide whether the, the citation should be vacated. So, uh, I don't know how the commissioners will decide. I don't know what their judgment will contain. But I think it's possible that the judgment could be written in a way that made it clear that even under present orders, the, uh, school's mask policy would be appropriate for our particular context.
You're hoping that, that your own mask ordinance will still be able to supersede any local health regulation? Is that your position?
No, I think that as we read the county code, the commissioners have the ability to hear an appeal and say that there are compelling interests in particular circumstances, where a deviation from the normal mask mandate might be appropriate to avoid an unintended harm, so long as the public health is being otherwise insured.
Um, can I ask you also? Heather Willie September, you also admitted from your materials, you included something from the Owen County Schools, which, uh, was basically saying that they were not going to put a mask with the regulation in place. Is there a reason why you did not include the, um, superintendent's message regarding their change in course of action on September thirteenth? And it says, "The Owen County Board of Education, um, approved a plan that functions as the district's COVID nineteen operational guide. And based on this plan, Owen County Schools will have identity issued by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. Therefore, Owen County Schools will require all students, staff members, and visitors to wear masks in all indoor facilities and buses."
Yeah, I think you missed the point.
You didn't include that, that in, in your materials?
We were merely quoting a relevant person who said, "We have to take into account a balancing of goods and harms holistically."
And that other person now changed courses and is requiring masks, correct?
The principle I was trying to establish is that we should weigh goods and harms holistically. Now, I, I've argued at length, some of the reasons why I think that in the weighing of competing goods and competing harms, uh, the Seven Oaks policy in the context of this particular school building and not an entire district, um, makes sense.
So you, but you do recognize that Owen County is now requiring masks, correct?
I, I think that's utterly irrelevant.
What? I just asked, yes or no? You do know that Owen County is now requiring masks?
Right. If you say so. I have, uh, I haven't followed Owen County's mask policy closely. I think that their district doesn't.
Okay, but you did know what they were doing. Well, I am happy to share with you today that they are now requiring masks. Um, so, um, let me ask one last question of you. If the commissioners do not grant your appeal, and if your board chooses to not follow a local mask regulation, are you going to require masks at your school?
I'm, I'm confident now as I've ever been that our board wants to follow the law. And if we're shown that we're in error about what the law requires, uh, then we'll change as we need to change.
I have no further questions. Here, uh, commissioners, I would ask that all of the documents that I submitted today are incorporated in the record. And I would also like to call Penny Cottle to ask her a few questions.
Great, thank you. Uh, we'll go ahead and admit all the, uh, evidence and, uh, Ms. Cottle? Any questions?
Do you need to swear?
Uh, she is answering questions, correct?
I thought she was asking questions. I'm sorry.
I'm, oh, I, I was going to ask her some questions.
Yes, I.
Okay, so we do need to go ahead and swear in everybody, um, who is here as a witness. If, can we do that all at once, Mr. Cockrell?
Uh, we can, or we can do it as they're called.
Okay.
Usually, I, I think it's a good reminder.
Okay, good.
Can you please right, raise your right hand? Do you affirm under the penalties of perjury that the information you are about to give is, to the best of your knowledge, accurate?
Ms. Cottle, um, as the director or of the, uh, Monroe County Health Department, you did go out and visit Seven Oaks School on the day that you issued a citation. Is that correct? And did you clarify when you were there with Dr. Schiff that the mask, uh, regulation put in place by the board of health did require them to wear masks, to, to have masks in the school for all students, faculty, staff, unless an exception applied?
Yes, I believe I did.
Okay. Do you feel like you made that clear to him? Or did he seem to have questions about the, um, the applicability of the rule to, to the school?
I think that he understood it was a matter of interpretation in terms of, uh, where the authority was.
Okay. And shown up to a board of health meeting to ask you for clarifications or give input or ask for additional exceptions? And you specifically sent him an email and invited him to participate in the regulatory process, didn't you?
I did.
Did you get a reply to that email?
I don't believe that I did.
Did you, um, send him information about clear masks that might be able to be used by people with disabilities or that were able to sort of help with understanding?
Yes, I sent that to all schools.
Did you get a response from him?
Uh, I don't believe I did.
Do, did you, um, does the board of, um, public health invite or allow public comment at their meetings?
Yes, they do.
And do they have any limitation on the time restrictions?
They usually limit to three minutes.
Okay. Um, but again, Dr. Schiff or any board members never showed up to participate or provide public comment? Is that correct?
No.
If they had showed up, would you have listened and would the board of health have listened to their perspective and considered their information?
Absolutely.
Did you offer help to Dr. Schiff in the implementation of a local health regulation?
We had a school meeting with all of our schools. I, I'm not sure if there's something else in particular to make sure that I'm answering your question.
Yeah, no, I'm just wondering, when you went out there to visit with him, did you offer and suggest that you would work with him to, if they had issues with implementation, that you would help them work for those?
I believe so. We do that routinely.
And you got the opportunity to hear, um, Dr. Schiff's, uh, testimony today. Do you feel, uh, the calls for their school are sufficient so that they shouldn't have to comply with a local health regulation? Or would it be your position still as the, as the, uh, health department director, that you would still want them to comply with a local health regulation? Because you think that, that mask regulation, um, it protects students in a way that is better or different than the protocol that Seven Oaks has in place?
I believe that we need a layered approach. And the department's stance would be the same as the Indiana Department of Health, that masks are the most important thing right now we can have in schools.
And you do, um, believe that students with disabilities under our current regulation could either, if they have a speech or hearing impairment, could either go without a mask or wear one of these clear surgical masks?
Face shield.
Okay. Yeah, a face shield would be completely clear. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And do you think that that's a better option than no mask at all?
I think it's a better option than no mask at all, yes.
Thank you. I have no further questions for Ms. Cottle.
Okay, um, does anyone else from the health department list of witnesses wish to offer, uh, testimony?
I, I think you need to allow Dr. Schiff to cross-examine.
Okay. Oh, one at a time. Okay, gotcha. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cockrell. Uh, Dr. Schiff, did you want to respond or ask any questions?
Uh, sure, yeah. If I, I may, I wonder if I could ask a few questions to Ms. Cottle. Ms. Cottle, uh, good to see you again. I, I, just a few questions that come to my minds. Um, I wonder, uh, from your knowledge of case counts and such, is there evidence that, um, the number of Seven Oaks COVID cases are disproportionate relative to the number of cases at other area schools here in the county that are enforcing a universal mask mandate?
Not that I know of.
There, there was this question that came up from the last, uh, watching the video from the last public health board meeting. I, I was curious, how, how many masking violation citations have been issued since the August fifth order went into effect?
Since the August fifth order, I believe only the one.
Okay. If we, um, are the only ones, it sounds like we are, um, is, is that because compliance around the county has otherwise been universal?
Well, we follow up one on complaints and, um, and made our site visit to confirm, um, not just rely on, um, people telling us or, or other conversations, made the site visit to be able to confirm non-compliance.
Gotcha. So has there been a dramatically higher number of complaints associated with some, than other organizations in the county?
Well, Seven Oaks is a school, and so it is somewhat different. But we do follow a process for all businesses with complaints. Uh, we always seek to find voluntary compliance. And so as long as we are seeing some movement and, and compliant, towards compliance, um, that extends that process.
Sure. Um, I am curious just to hear you, uh, kind of walk me through what steps you guys take to assure that decisions about citations are made in a nondiscriminatory fashion. Just again, given the very small number of citations issued, I guess one. And the relatively easy evidence from my own cursory time about town, uh, to find that the mandate's not universally being followed. So again, how, how do, I guess I'm looking for the steps that help to ensure that you're not applying this in a nondiscriminatory fashion.
Sure. So we get complaints, for instance, from different ways. Um, on a general business, they tend to come in through our complaint line. We may get school complaints that same way. They may come through email or different ways as well. Certainly, you know that the media picked up on this is, as well. So we start generally with phone calls and trying to confirm what the situation is so we can get all. so we can get all sides of what's going on. We can determine what people are doing in order to be compliant. And we work towards steps to get that compliance.
Yeah, I know one of the unfortunate terms in the way that the paper reported was to say that we were defying the county health order, which of course is never what we saw ourselves as doing. Maybe I'll ask you the same question that Margie Rice suggested. Do you take a newspaper to, in all cases, be reliable?
I do not.
So I'm wondering how the, again, at the end of the day, how is the decision arrived at to cite Seven Oaks despite there being no previous site visits? Or an explicit inquiry at the time regarding whether exceptions such as disabilities would apply?
Well, we didn't have a request for that, number one. So we had evidence, you know, the protocols, they weren't being masks weren't being required. Our health order said they were supposed to be. We confirmed that, and that's what led to that ticket.
I see. I'll maybe a few more questions. Do you see as being part of your duty in your office to think of health exclusively in terms right now of COVID-19?
No.
Does are you concerned not only with physical health, but also educational, emotional, and social health?
Yes.
Is it, in your opinion, might mask mandates have a negative impact on the educational, emotional, or social health of students? Or do you regard that as a settled question in the science on the subject?
I would say that if there were not some exceptions or other opportunities, such as clear masks or shield, that that might be true.
So just to be clear, you don't grant that there is a negative impact on students' education, emotion, or social well-being that masks might cause?
There could be, but if there are options, you can negate those.
And on that second part of the question, do you regard the potential negative effects of masks as a settled question in the science?
Do I think that's a fact, is the question, do I think that that's a factor in the overall picture?
I'm just, I mean, scientist, but as I've tried to kind of keep abreast at some of the studies that would seem to be relevant to a school setting, my own impression, as I've already suggested, is that the science is anything but settled. I was just gonna give you an opportunity to say whether you agreed or whether.
Okay, yeah, sure. I just want to make sure I'm understanding your question. And certainly, science does change. The Indiana Department of Health has the, there's the North Carolina ABC Science Collaborative findings where masks is a bigger factor in terms of protecting schools than distance.
Right. As you, as you know, Seven Oaks was one of the few schools opening exclusively for in-person learning last year. I think last year, given that we still did not require masks in the classroom when students were stationary, as long as they were at least three feet apart or more, were cases last year at Seven Oaks disproportionate relative to other county schools, including ones that were online or hybrid?
Not that I'm aware of.
I wonder, do you have any evidence that kind of along these lines this year that Seven Oaks, by its policies, have been a source of disproportionate community spread as a result of its masking policy?
Not that I'm aware of.
Do you, do you think that there are any correlated harms such as suicide rates among young that are, seem to be tracking in proportion to the length of time that we find ourselves
Commissioners, I'm going to object that Penny is not an expert in suicide rates and that this is absolutely not relevant. I think we're going off on a tangent. So I'd like, I'd like Dr. Shipp to stay focused on the kinds of questions that have already been and the topics that have already been talked about in this appeal hearing.
I think, Ms. Cottle, if you want to explain your ability to answer the question, I think that would suffice for us.
With the question, I was just thinking that we'd already established that she was concerned with all forms of health in the county. But well, I'll let that go. In fact, let's just, I won't ask any further questions of Ms. Cottle. Thank you, Ms. Cottle, for talking with me. I look forward to seeing you again in person.
You too.
I do have a couple of follow-up questions based on his questions. Ms. Cottle, have you had any other school fail to comply with the mask regulation?
Not that I'm aware of.
And is that, is Seven Oaks the only school that you had to cite? Because they're the only ones who failed to comply?
Yes.
And have you received complaints about Seven Oaks perhaps not testing adequately or being truthful about their exposure cases?
Yes.
Okay. And as for the question about the mask mandate being harmful to children, if you thought that this mask meant harmful to children, would you have recommended to the Board of Health that they put it in place? And do you believe that there are exceptions within this mask regulation that allows it to be applied in a way that is sympathetic to or addresses the needs of people with disabilities?
Yes.
And do you feel that wearing a face shield is harmful to children?
No.
And is the exception about indoor exercise that would be not compatible with wearing a mask, is that to do with cardiovascular exercises opposed to a mental exercise?
Yes.
Well, I'll ask a couple of follow-up questions like of this. I want to kind of make sure we're clear. When we said that there was no other citation, that was not just of schools, that was of any other organization in the county, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Since August 5th, yes.
I also am curious about, I mean, anything can be reported. Have there, have you ever had any complaints about any other schools in the county in terms of enforcement or truthfulness of their their submission of records?
On their submission of records, I don't believe so. Can I ask what that means, submission of records?
There is, Margie Rice seemed to be making much of the fact that someone could submit a complaint about Seven Oaks and speculate that Seven Oaks in any way have been untruthful in its reporting. I wonder, Penny, can complaints be submitted anonymously?
They can online, yes. Somebody could not.
Is there any way then of validating whether a complaint has has merit in terms of the truthfulness of the reporting?
That's why we always start kind of with those phone calls and that follow-up. And that is exactly why we do that. If it's in terms of some sort of reporting, then we would look at it in terms of what kinds of reports we actually have.
From a complaint, has there been anything about your interaction with the school that's caused you to doubt that we're trying to report as required? Okay. I, again, Ms. Cottle, I appreciate the opportunity to talk. No further questions at this time from me.
Last question for you, Ms. Cottle. You don't believe that you or the Board of Health have discriminated against Seven Oaks, do you? Thank you.
Maybe one last question then. Just to be clear, maybe we left this a little unclear earlier. Did you explicitly ask when you were on campus whether there would be any of the exceptions in paragraph two of the county Public Health Order that applied? That would explain some of the people not wearing masks?
I don't think that I did.
Okay.
And one last question then. Did Dr. Shipp offer any evidence or any statistics to you when you were on school about the exceptions that would apply?
I don't believe so.
Thank you.
Are there other members from the Health Department that wish to offer information that are on our list?
Yeah, no, I keep wanting to say your honor, because I feel like I'm a court commissioner. No, we, I have no further witnesses at this point. I believe that we have enough information on the record.
Thank you.
I do have a closing statement though.
Let's see if we have questions from the board here. We haven't really, I jumped in once for clarification, but I think this would be a good time to actually elicit questions from my colleagues. Commissioner Jones, do you have questions for either party? You're muted. You're muted.
Sorry about that. My dog's been a little annoying. I don't have any questions right at this time. I feel that things have been made quite clear.
Commissioner Giffens, do you have some questions for either or both parties?
Yeah, I do. My first one is to both Dr. Shipp and to Ms. Cottle. What do you think is the role of public health in our community? What do you think public health entails?
Ms. Cottle, I'll defer to you if you would like.
No, I want to hear from you, Dr. Shipp, first, because, for me, no, no, because, well, go ahead.
Yeah, we talked a lot about, or I talked a lot about in my description, being concerned with the total well-being of those entrusted to our care. So we're, of course, my primary focus is on the school community for which I'm responsible. But we're also thinking about the school community vis-à-vis the community as a whole. And I hope that what we do tends toward the the overall well-being of staff, students, and the broader community. And that overall well-being, I think, encompasses not only concern about COVID-19, but other forms of physical health as well as social and emotional health, psychological health. I think the health needs sort of fairly broadly, fairly comprehensively. Really, that consideration is what stands behind our appeal.
Ready for me? All right, yeah, the Health Department's mission is really to prevent, protect, and to improve the health of all people in Monroe County. And it does include the whole social determinants of health, the whole person. So again, those social aspects as well as physical health. Certainly, from a public health department standpoint, we, when you're in a pandemic, there are often times with communicable diseases that that has to come to the forefront.
So my understanding is that this needs to be proactive, not reactive. And so now we're not waiting for really bad things to happen before we react. And that is important.
May I chime in in reference to that?
Sure.
I agree. I think one of the things that Margie reminded us is that Ms. Cottle works within certain parameters. She must operate within the county code and the public health orders that exist. But I think one of the things that lies with the commissioners is to be proactive in ways that this appeal seems to be intended to make possible. So I really would encourage, looking at some of the studies listed in my exhibit, some of them are quite recent in their publication date and would allow for the commissioners to take into account proactively considerations that might be ineligible for Ms. Cottle to consider in her role.
Well, I only got these documents a few days ago, and I've not had the time to dig through all of the research that you sent. But on one of them, they were citing data from the UK from June 1st through July 17th of 2020. And that predates both the ability for people to receive vaccines, and it predates the Delta variant. And so I think that some of the data, we have to look at what the Delta variant is giving us in terms of the community spread. One of the things that Ms. Cottle has said at one of our public meetings, I believe, is that under the Alpha variant, on average, a person would infect one other person if they have COVID. Under the Delta variant, it's eight, nine people. And so it's much, much more.
Yeah, I think that's why I wanted to make sure I do the reference to the UK guidance, which is current, San Angeles Star reported even today, the counts in schools are down over the last two weeks, matching a statewide trend.
And in the UK, as of four days ago, the BBC reported that nine out of 10 of those 16 and over have received at least one vaccine shot, which means that we're nowhere near what the UK is in terms of our vaccine rates. So I think that we have to take things like that into consideration also, at least for me. I don't know if you've followed some of the same news that I have, but I've seen that in some states like in Tennessee and South Carolina, the parents of special education students are actually suing for mask mandates to protect their students. I don't know if you've seen those, but there are, I've got old data from the Department of Education, but as of last October 1st, Seven Oaks indicated that you had eight students with other health impairments. And so some of those may be physical kinds of things that would require others around them to mask for their own protection. And so it would be, sometimes there are things in conflict, and we have to provide the best coverage for everybody in this case. So I don't know what those students have. Nobody's asked for specific a specific variance for those particular students. And I think that that would have to come for each student, not for the school in general, that there would be a waiver for the mask for me. So you've also argued about the ability to learn foreign language and for students who have reading challenges, things like that. Who on the Seven Oaks staff is a licensed speech pathologist?
We have a number of services that we offer on-site and some that we contract out, we actually contract out to a third-party speech-language pathologist who's on-site several days a week to work with students, according to the terms of their IEP.
Okay, but that person has not been asked to provide any evidence here or any professional opinion?
That's correct.
And then, again, referring back to the data that you provided, the state for the October 1st counts for 2020, you list several students that have severe disabilities. And when I went through your list of who is on the Seven Oaks staff, who's qualified to work with students with severe disabilities? By name, who's that staff member?
I'm sorry, what is your question?
Okay, you're arguing that you should have exemptions based upon disabilities of some of your students. And some of your students, according to the count that was given last year to the State Department of Education, you have several students with severe disabilities. And I want to know who on your staff is qualified, is licensed to work with students with severe disabilities?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand the relevance of your question. I've merely.
It doesn't matter if you understand the relevance. I'm asking. It doesn't matter if you understand the relevance. I'm asking the question because you raised the issue about disabilities and needing waivers for, for certain.
Yes.
Well, you're asking for us to make a decision, and so I'm asking how you get to that conclusion that they're needed for those students when you don't have anybody on staff who's qualified to work with them.
I'm sorry, the disabilities I pointed to, by and large, are not in the category of severe disabilities.
Autism is. According to the state. And you, so is traumatic brain injury, so the orthopedic impairment that you had listed. That's state data that you reported.
Okay.
So who's qualified to be giving you the information that you would need to make these arguments?
I, I, I've tried to show the bases of my arguments. I, I didn't actually appeal to our special education teachers because I thought that the, the best authority are not necessarily daily practitioners in many cases, but those who are conducting scientific studies relevant to the consideration, relevant to the argument.
Without proper people on staff, you can't give us data that shows that any of these kids are being held back because they would have masks on. You have no data for those, for those kids, and you don't have anybody qualified to be working with them.
I'm, I'm sorry, the, the, this line of questioning is seems to obscure more than illuminate. It I, again, I realize you said you've not had much time yet to weigh through the evidence that I've submitted. I, I would encourage you to take that time. I know that there's a window for consideration that's allowed under the state ordinance. And I, I think you'll find that some of your concerns are alleviated as you, you work through the, the evidence that I've submitted.
Okay, so part of your argument too was that the 2021 school year, you indicated that nearly a third of the students were screened for Dix, who were screened for dyslexia, were found to be either at risk or at some risk. Yet you only have, last year, you only had 17 students with specific learning disabilities, and I would assume only part of those have dyslexia. So how many students actually have dyslexia at your school, if you're going to use that as an argument?
Well, I used it in the initial appeal. I didn't make much of it in my explanation today. There is a process of discovery, as, as I think you know, where once screening occurs, students who are found to be at risk or at some risk, you begin to have a process that plays out that could culminate in a finding of dyslexia. So we're in the midst of that process.
Well, there is a timeline for completing that process too, under special education law, and especially in the child time provisions. So you haven't answered the question in my mind. Because you are required under special education law to fully, to fully evaluate the kids. We already talked about the clear masks. One of the, the things that you presented in your argument also was from your French teacher, whom you claim is the head of your, your foreign language department, or who you said, I shouldn't use the word claimed. The way this reads, it would, it would sound as though no blind person would ever ever learn a foreign language. And I find that beyond the pale. People do learn foreign languages if they can't see. It happens all the time with online stuff and all, all kinds of other things. I just don't find that argument very compelling. So if you have more that you want to share with that, please do.
I, I think the argument was about what's advantageous or disadvantageous. And I think there can be degrees of advantages, just as there can be degrees of disadvantageousness. So I think it's relevant in the face of an unsettled science that it is a disadvantage for most students, for the teachers and students in a foreign language setting, not to be able to see one another's faces. In no way, in acknowledging that, are we claiming that it's impossible to learn a foreign language and overcome the, an additional layer of challenge, whether that be because of blindness or because of masks or whatever it may be. We're talking about what's helpful.
Well, and, and the ordinance, if I understand it, and please correct me, Ms. Cottle, if I'm wrong, but if the instructor is at least six feet away from the students, he or she can go without any kind of face covering so that the, the students can still see the, the instructor. And of course, with a clear face covering, that's possible too. Is that correct, Ms. Cottle?
It certainly was last year. There, there have been some changes, and the most recent change is that everybody in the classroom should be masked, period, so that they don't have to quarantine as they have before. So it, there is some constant change around that.
Thank you, thank you. Didn't have it quite right then. I also find it hard to, this is just me, and again, if you want to, to support your, your contentions, but you talk about looking at numbers last year for Seven Oaks versus other schools. Nobody was collecting data on the, on schools last year. There was no reporting. Anything that anybody got was just anecdotal. And that also was not in the time of the Delta variant. So I guess I, I find it I find it hard to, to, to take that into serious consideration to compare last year when there were no numbers collect, collected last year.
I wonder if we could ask Ms. Cottle to verify whether, whether or not data was being collected from schools last year.
Yeah, but there was the dashboard, the, the school dashboard did go up last year. That is still up today. So it is not a mandatory reporting, and that's why you'll see some schools don't report, some may have zero. But there is certainly reporting that's asked of all the schools, and that started, that did start last year.
Okay. Okay, I, I think that's it for me for right now. I may have others. As I listen to Commissioner Thomas and
Yeah, yeah, thank you. So I have questions for both, both sides, but I'll start with Dr. Ship, if that's okay. Can you, you had just finished talking about the studies you provided in Exhibits N and Exhibits O. You said something along the lines, and I wrote it down, but I just wanted to get some clarification. You said something about parents sending their kids to Seven Oaks and choosing Seven Oaks because of the mask situation? Or was that because learning was in-person last year? Can you clarify that statement? Is that enough reference to help you get to that point in your?
Yeah, certainly. I'm happy to expound just a little bit on that. Certainly, last year, we did see a significant number of families who came to us and said some version of, just appreciating that we were open in person. This year, we did have a handful of families that made it quite clear in the admission process that their decision was made in part or in whole by the fact that we were not requiring masks, which again, as I've suggested, we've, we've, was a policy that we adopted in the full conviction that it was within bounds.
That makes sense. So you're, so you, you're not saying that you made that decision because it would impact your census? You're saying that the decision was made, and then you're getting those comments after the fact?
No, we, we wouldn't make a decision like that in light of your public relations or to boost enrollment. No, that, I, I merely mean to say that having made the decision that we thought best suited to our educational environment, and with all due attention to public health and current orders in effect, it so happened that some, some families voluntarily told us, hey, we master a big deal to us, and this is part of our calculation in coming to your school, because they were concerned about harms that they believe their child had experienced or might experience as a result of extended mask wearing.
Okay. So when you look at the, and thank you for that, that helps clarify it for me. When you look at the, the order, the health order relating to exceptions, and it talks, the order speaks specifically about deficits in sight or hearing, right? Would, can you estimate, is that, is that fit that 13% number for your, for your population in your school, or is it closer to the 25%? Because I know you started talking about a lot of other aspects of learning disabilities.
Right.
But in terms of that physical disability, was that closer to 13%?
No, if you're talking about the deaf or hard of hearing or the visually impaired, that's a small, that'd be a very small percentage of the whole. But I, what I was suggesting is that, that, that provision was exemplary and showed an, an overall concern for how different kinds of disabilities might be impacted in a learning environment with enforcement of full masks. So
Okay. Excellent, thank you. So with that in mind, Ms. Cottle, since you are the one who went to Seven Oaks on that particular day, what can you estimate the number, the percentage of students and/or faculty or both combined that were or were not masked?
Oh, that's always a, a tough question. There certainly were some. The, I would say the vast majority was not. But certainly, you know, Dr. Ship was, was masked, and the person at the front desk was masked when we went in, and there were certainly students throughout our tour who were masked as well, and some teachers.
Okay, so you would say more than 50% were not masked?
Yes, I think that would be
Would that be fair? I mean, I, I know you didn't actually, you know, take a poll and take
Yeah, I, I think that it definitely, it was a definite majority were not.
Okay, okay, thank you. Um, and then a couple more questions for you, Ms. Cottle, if I might. Okay, so there was some, there was some discussion in the newspaper, and this showed up in the evidence about the, the statement made at a health board meeting about whether it was better to focus on in masks rather than the vaccinations, and that vaccinations were something you wanted to focus on. Is that, does can you provide some context for that discussion?
Sure, I think it's, what we were trying to say to the board was you have to look at the whole picture. So you're evaluating this. We put lots of time, energy, and money, so resources into compliance and to follow up with mask orders or any, any of the regulations that we've had. It could be a regulation about distancing over masks, right, that we've had a variety of them. And that we, and the complaints that we get on both sides, you know, we get plenty of complaints of people that like or don't like. And that perhaps some of that balance of time could be spent on vaccinations, trying to increase those vaccinations. So looking at how you allocate resources. So it is not to say that we don't believe masks work. We know that they do. There's clear evidence that they do work. It was simply, when you look at the whole picture, is the mandate in comparison to what's being expected to enforce it versus where we could spend those resources? Does that make sense?
It does, and you actually answered my follow-up question, so thank you for that. No, that, that does make a, a lot of sense. Thank you. So I actually have a couple of questions. Well, I have one more question, and I don't know if you want to address this for Ms. Rice. What was both, there are two health orders that have been included here. The first was from August 5th and the other from August 23rd, and the citation sort of falls in between those two. Can you explain how or why the, the health order was revised?
Sure. Well, the health board does meet regularly. They have met at least once a month, if not more frequently in some months, and constantly review the health orders, look to revise things as we get questions. We take public comment, and sometimes public comment will make, you know, decisions. We change the top, you, you even change the, when it was going into effect because of public comment. So changes are made because we're continually looking at the information, listening to the input that comes in. From my viewpoint, and I feel pretty confident in saying from the boards, there was no substantive change to this order. It really was about clarity.
Great. Ms. Rice, did you want to add anything to that, or?
Oh, I think that's correct. I mean, to the extent that there couldn't be any confusion.
Questions for you, Mike. And I know I didn't, and it's not probably common to do this, but two things have been raised, and I have questions about and we're not lawyers. So the regarding the process of the
I guess, I think the concern is he referred to the Board of Commissioners being the hearing body for these types of appeals, requiring you to be the hearing officer, and it requires you to approve the, the health order in order for it to become effective as well. So that is a issue. I understand his concerns, but it's not
And Dr. Ship, I hope you understand. I wish you were more comfortable with that part of the process personally, just because the other, the other question that I have Mr. Cockrell, is it seems to be, it seems to me that there's things for us to talk about. One is the citation and whether it should be appealed, but it also seems like there's a question about whether Seven Oaks would have to comply with the health order as interpreted by the Health Department. And we're, can you clarify that for, for us and for everybody?
Well, I think I can. I guess the, the, the issue is, if I restate it, is if the commissioners were to determine that this appeal should stand, right? I think that's where the issue comes in. I think it's, it's a matter of in the order projecting that, right? That this is going to stand, and it will stand for X number of days or till the order's changed again or something. I mean, you don't want indefinite. But you could certainly make it relevant, this order applicable to those, those items. And, and that's just for a practical sake. If, if the Board of Commissioners has heard the appeal, has approved this action, as long as those factual circumstances are in place, you know, they could just come back for an appeal and appeal and appeal after that. So I, I would think that that As long as those factual circumstances are in place, you know, they could just come back for an appeal and appeal and appeal after that. So I, I would think that that would be resolved.
So much. I appreciate that. Excellent. So let's see if my colleagues have other questions. Okay, go ahead.
I actually do have a question. Dr. Ship, you indicated that a rather large number of years are at risk of having dyslexia. And you talked about the importance of teaching phonetics. Is that the only form of reading that you teach, only phonetics?
So our, our primary vehicle for teaching reading is an intensive explicit phonics based program. The roots of the program actually lie in working with students who are who are experiencing reading difficulties, including actually Mrs. Handbook on Dyslexia about what would constitute a sort of gold standard and dyslexia instruction or characteristic features of the program we offer.
Yeah, that's interesting to me and and I'm sure that the practices may have changed. I have a very dyslexic son who learned how to read and then was no longer able to read once phonetics were introduced to him. And he had to really pursue a whole different course to learn to read. Do you have the flexibility for that kind of thing?
Well, there are certainly vehicles that exist for tailoring instruction to an individual student. That's the particularly through the vehicle of an individualized education plan and IEP. We do have a lot of confidence in our program, but we're also in a situation where there's been a tremendous influx of students and we want to make sure that we're able to work with them. I think we have a program that's well suited to that. And you know, one of the things that strikes me about our conversation today is there's, there's one category of expertise that I think to some extent we as this school do possess, which is giving testimony, I guess myself on behalf of the school, that we think that we can educate best in a setting where there's not universal mask wearing. With regard, our ability to educate as well as possible is a kind of education, a compelling interest of a school as a school.
Not work for individual students. Do you make any kind of?
So we do fully participate in different kinds of student services. We do have students with an IEP or a five oh four, for example, based on the nature of that student's particular need. So we are concerned to.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Commissioner Giffen?
Yeah.
You're muted.
What's the specific name of the reading program you use?
Excuse me, I was muted for a second. One from a group called Access Literacy.
Access Literacy is the name of the program?
This is in the Orton Gillingham family of phonics based instruction.
Okay. And I want to go back. You said something about students who were qualified for special, special education under the deaf or hearing category. Do you have any issue?
Yes, we do. I think the the broader point I was making is, again, there was an exception listed in paragraph two of the ordinance that tended toward the broader point that's indicated in the code for the county as a basis for appeal, which is that enforcing the health order would have an adverse impact to individuals experiencing disability in that language does not narrowly apply. At least in the language of the code to students with a particular disability. That's not specified. It just says an adverse impact to individuals experiencing disability.
How many students? Yes, you did earlier. It's, it's been recorded. How many students do you have who are deaf or hard of hearing?
I'd have to double check the numbers. I can if you'd like me to follow up on an email with the exact number.
Because last year you didn't have any that you reported. Do you have any faculty or staff that are deaf or hard of hearing?
No.
So there would be no reason for them to ask for that. As a reason not to.
The broader point is what's invited by the code, which is that we need to look at what they're enforcing stability, whatever the nature of that disability may be. So we're really asking is, in an educational context, are there disabilities that would would present an impediment? And would there be a harm to universal masking for, for individuals with that disability? Whether it's deaf or hard of hearing or it's another disability. At least that's, that's how I understand the breadth of the code as well.
It could also be interpreted that that individual could apply to not have a mask mandate and not the entire school.
Well, I, I just know that Seven Oaks is what was cited, not a particular individual. So I'm responding on behalf of the school as the object of the citation.
Are there any other questions or comments that either side wishes to offer? We could start with Dr. Ship.
No.
For the Health Department.
Does Dr. Ship have a closing argument? Or is that what you just asked?
I just asked if there are other questions or comments.
I have, I want to make some closing statements, but I would allow Dr. Ship to go first typically. That, the, you know, the person.
Right. So, but, but I'm just asking if there are other questions that have arisen between either side that needs to be addressed right now and see if there's and we can come to closing comments next, but I just wanted to see if there's anything else. Okay, okay. So Dr. Ship, did you want to make a closing statement?
Very briefly, yeah. I just want to reiterate that I, I think that there are the, there are the several bases of appeal outlined in the code. One of those is all, it concerns the executive order and public health order as that were in effect at the time of the citation. And we've shown that we have a plausible interpretation of those. The second would be to look at this whole matter of compelling interests and to see whether we've been able to articulate any compelling interests that deserves to be considered, whether that be the education of children or the overall well being of our students or our partnership with parents. And I, I think it's important to consider that one of the major factors there is to consider whether measures have been taken to ensure public health. And one of the things that most certainly has not been shown today is that Seven Oaks has failed to ensure public health. And then there is this, a separate category of concern related to people who might have a disability. And again, I think that that should be read as broadly as the language of the code, which provides the criteria for review. I, I do want to just again conclude by saying thank you to the commission for having this process and I, I do trust that as you all sort out this brave new world that you're, you're faced with, that you'll, you'll do it with all due consideration. And I, I do want to say really truly in closing that I, I hope all of you will take opportunity at some point to come visit. I, I certainly realize that the school has kept me busy and limited my interaction in some certain public venues and I I certain you guys would say the same and I, I hope we can get to know one another better and I I do look forward to you getting to know Seven Oaks and the work that we do here with students. So when all this blows over and y'all are comfortable, please know that y'all are more than welcome to come visit and I'd be happy to show you what we're about. And Ms. Jones, I'd love to have you see the phonics program in action. That would be, I, I trust, interesting to you and a pleasure for me. So again, thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Ship. We really appreciate all your time today and and all the information you provided. So from the Health Department, is there a closing statement?
Yeah, I'd like to make, I don't know if Penny wants to, but I have something that I'd like to say. So I believe that this matter is a lot more clear than Dr. Ship leaves. I think this boils down to the fact that Seven Oaks Board of Directors believes they know better and clearly I think Dr. Ship seen today to think that he knows better and should substitute their judgment for the local Board of Health. Indiana law is absolutely clear, as I read today into the record, that charter schools have to follow local and state law. And somehow the Board of Directors of Seven Oaks and Dr. Ship has read into into the law some ambiguous, ambiguous language or some creative interpretation and or a partial limitation where there are words that say no limitation. They somehow read a partial limitation into the authority of, of the local health board. And I don't know how they did that, but I will tell you that, you know, the executive order twenty one nineteen did say that K through twelve schools were responsible for implementing local measures. Not rejecting the local measures, but implementing, putting into effect the local measures. They don't, they didn't say that they got to decide on their own. State law didn't evaporate. The state law that says they have to follow health regulations was still in effect this whole time. The governor didn't repeal that, say it didn't take effect. Paragraph five of executive order twenty one nineteen said there was no limitation on local authority. That went on to talk about quarantine. It went on to talk about closure. Somehow, Dr. Ship today has said right into that, that while they could quarantine and they could close, they somehow had a limitation on masking. Now again, don't know how he got to that conclusion. I think it was clear. Paragraph six of that same executive order said that local governments could be more restrictive than the state as long as they complied with procedures set forth in Senate Act five and codified in Indiana Code sixteen dash twenty dash one dash twenty one point five and sixteen dash twenty two dash eight thirty one point three. So if that wasn't enough, the governor came back and clarified again, and all of that was set forth in a letter by Grace College to to Dr. Ship and to their Board of Directors. Somehow, he's confused about that as well. And I think, you know, there's a pattern here. There's a pattern of wanting to substitute judgment. There's a pattern of, of finding ambiguity or reading ambiguity into it because you don't like the result. And I would ask that you would deny their appeal today. I don't think they've provided persuasive information. I don't think they've met the burden of proof. You know, Seven Oaks purports to be a school that teaches democracy yet has ignored the democratic process, has not taken advantage of the regulatory process. They've missed an opportunity here. I've personally talked to the Board of Directors and then show up at the Board of Health because they take public comment and they would hear from you. Please show up and participate in democracy. Come to a Board of Commissioners meeting, participate in democracy, chose not to avail themselves of the democratic process, yet they teach democracy. So to date, Seven Oaks has either ignored, intentionally read ambiguity into or creatively interpreted governors' executive orders, two of them, still couldn't get him to, to pin down today to say he's going to comply with the even clarified executive order and the clarified Board of Health rules. So he's ignored the governor's executive orders. Somehow ignoring the very clear parts of Indiana law that the General Assembly has put in, even said he doesn't really like the way the General Assembly does this appeal process. He'd like to do it better. There's a bit of arrogance in this. He's, he's ignored the letter or has creatively read the letter from the charter school, which you have both letters. I'd, I'd ask you to read them and see what you think. I think it's pretty clear that the charter school said you have to comply and they set forth the various executive orders and laws that said why they have to comply. I'm not clear today, after this hearing, whether Dr. Ship is going to comply or not. Or the, or their Board of Directors. So they've, they've ignored, they're in violation of their charter. In my opinion, you've got the charter, you've got Grace College's letter, read them for yourself. They're in violation of local Board of Health order, the only school in Monroe County that is in violation, the only school that had to get a ticket, that Penny went there and tried to clarify. And so, you know, to me, this fine has to stand. This fine has to stand. I think you could call it a lesson in democracy for them. The state law is very clear. I, I would not I would not be confused just because Dr. Ship wants to read in ambiguity or read into confusion. It's not confusing. The state of Indiana has authority to regulate regarding health. They have delegated to their ninety two counties the authority to regulate health. And charter schools have to follow those regulations. It is, it's really pretty simple. And I'd ask that you would uphold this fine. And, you know, still on the table is Indiana Code sixteen twenty one twenty four that says local officers, health officers may order schools closed and forbid public gatherings when considered necessary to prevent and stop epidemics. And that's still on the table. And so to the extent that you know, a local school is not complying and is spreading disease, they can be closed. To think that a local Board of Health can't regulate masks is, is illogical. So again, please, please uphold this citation because they have the burden of proof and didn't mean it. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. So for my colleagues, we have a couple of options where we can take a vote today or we can take this under, all this information under advisement and come back to take a vote during one of our regular meetings. And then provide the written decision after fifteen days after we, we have that public vote. So I was wondering where the two of you are at on this. And whether you would like to take this under advisement or Mr. Cockrell, maybe you can help.
I, I just wanted to make sure everybody understands the written opinion would have to be issued fifteen days from today, not from, from when.
When the vote is, yeah.
So it's fifteen days from today. I just want to make sure that.
Thank you. Sorry. Sorry, I was not clear on that. Thank you. So colleagues?
It seems to me that we were given a huge amount of information on Friday that is all relevant to this topic. And I don't think any of us actually managed to study every bit of that information. So I would be rather inclined to put off a vote until we can really go through all that information and, and get a good understanding of it. And there, Mr. Cockrell, is, at this point, are we, is it acceptable for us to do any research on our own?
I think you could, I think you could review the record and the materials provided by the parties. I think that is what is before you. I think that.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I think that is, would be my, my advice is to reflect upon what's been given to you. I mean, clearly, some of the exhibits reference articles and I think it's fine to go ahead and, and look at those articles and, and things like that to review it. So I guess that would be my, my suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
So Mr. Cockrell, are you saying that I can't look at CDC recommendations that clearly state that masks work?
I think, I, I, I think that clearly within the provisions of the materials to you, the CDC guidance is referenced throughout all the local health orders. I think you are, and I also think there's a general understanding already of what is in the CDC guidelines. We kind of, when we talk about them with a judge, it's kind of like judicial notice. So like all the statutes are judicial notices, all the CDC regulations for, and the purpose of the health order. You, you could take judicial notice and, and look those up if you have any questions about any, any of that kind of things.
And really, this is an opportunity just because I was able to read through the material, but certainly being able to ask questions and then hear the presentations. I, I'm going to be looking that, at that evidence in a, in a different light probably than I was. I, I'm going to be looking that, at that evidence in a, in a different light probably than I was on, you know, Saturday, Sunday. So, so I think for me, I would also like some time and I, it sounds like Commissioner Giffens, that was my question. Do you want more time or, it sounds like two of us do.
I'm, I'm kind with that.
Okay, okay. Mr. Cockrell, do we have to set a date for the vote?
I think, I think what you would do would be close this hearing with the statement that we will issue, that, that we will have a, a final vote and issue a written determination within 15 days.
Perfect. Great. I'm going to go ahead and motion, make a motion to conclude the hearing to ensure that we have a written decision issued within 15 days along with our, our vote.
Second.
And again, I do want to thank everyone for participating today because it was insightful and really helpful. And I, I know everybody took a lot of time to provide us with some, some evidence to consider and, and that evidence is compelling on both sides. So thank you all. Mr. Cockrell, we, please call the roll.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Hearing has concluded and a written determination will be made within 15 days.
Again, thank you everyone for being patient and being so informative.
Can I ask one last question, dude? When this written statement is, is made, to what extent are we, let's see, I'm not asking this right.
Do you want me to just kind of maybe go through it a little bit about the process?
Yes, if you wouldn't mind, please.
Well, I, I guess the process as I, as I envision it is that you guys are, you have meetings that have been publicly noticed for Wednesday. And I'm thinking the work session in particular, we would have this as a potential time to vote at the Wednesday work session. If you guys feel you're ready to make that decision. From my perspective, we'll do the same thing the Wednesday afterwards. If that doesn't work, the Wednesday afterwards is kind of a really tight window to, to get a written determination made after, after the decision. So there's a potential that maybe we talk about on Wednesday of, after that Wednesday work session, maybe continuing it to a Thursday or Friday. So you guys could have a few more days if needed to get to that determination. And then I would expect you to, to vote on it once you guys all feel comfortable that you know what your vote is going to be. And at that time that you would vote on it, and it kind of like with the, the appellate courts where one of the justices is kind of assigned to oversee the writing of the opinion. And so we, you would do that at that point in time. And then at the following Wednesday, you know, clearly that person would be working with the legal department to, to help craft that because judges have law clerks as well. And then we could present that for a vote of the entire board that following Wednesday. That's kind of the timeline, I think, that's in my mind, if you guys are all comfortable with that.
Thank you. That clarifies it a lot.
Yeah, good. Thank you. And hopefully it's clear to, clear to both, both the parties who are present today as well. Excellent.
One thing I just want to make very clear for the record is that while I am an attorney for the Monroe County Legal Department, I will not be involved in that process that Jeff just described at all. I will not even be, I will have no additional knowledge that Dr. Ship does not. We will be on equal footing in that regard.
Right, absolutely. No, I appreciate that you said that. Thank you. We, we would expect no less. And I know that you're professional and you would do no less. So we'll put up the wall.
The wall has been up.
Any, anyone else, anything else? Okay, thank you. Thank you again. And we appreciate all of your time and all the information. And with that, we are concluded. Thank you so much.